You. Yeah, it's recording already. It's already recording. I'll hang up.
You hear me?
Yeah, you unmute it? Yeah.
Come on, lower the sound. I just want to lower it. Well, I know with Zoom is. I mean with, um, let's see what I get.
I'm gonna go live now, now that we're on. Simple questions, simple, um, try to sell yourself as like I tell them. I tell the candidates, sell yourself. Um, and then from there, we, we, we'll, we'll go from there, you know. If they have questions and answers, I'll share it on Facebook or questions on my site. And then, um. Okay, is that?
Let me just lower the, uh, the sign there real quick.
Okay.
Behind me. There you go.
I'll click my live on my side. And, oh, I gotta put the audio, the. Let me, um. Remove. I just remember I put the audio on this, um, you, okay. Audio. Where you at? Okay. Well, don't even share, tell me, showing audio, that's weird. Hmm. Now, my say don't share audio. Let's share audio as we go live. Did you say share? But if I go to my Chrome. Okay, there, 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 there we go. Share audio. Boom. But it shows a blank one, and I don't want the blank one. I want the. The real one. Hmm. Let me take that off. Then I go back to. My Chrome tab. Oh, they're sending me to my other one. Oh, my gosh. Now, I'm having a pause on my site.
Oh, you're having a pause?
Yeah, it's like, come on now. Remove. Remove. Okay, then. Better remove some. App software to my site. Okay, there. Well, they can't hear us or hear us. What happens is they're gonna be pre-recorded on the send it to my YouTube channel.
So we're okay?
Yeah, we're okay, um. We're okay. They, they say something on Facebook, I'll be like, it's gonna, it's pre-recorded, so.
Well. Well, yeah, I know, cause, um. As long as we're okay, right?
Yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be pre-recorded, so they won't. Your opponents won't be tripping out. Ready to go live? Three, two, one, on my side. It's thirty second broadcast. Good morning, Imperial Valley. Just to let you guys know, thanks for the one viewer right now just showed up. As I speak, I'm gonna be speaking to Javier Moreno, running for City of Callexico, City Council. We had technical difficulties, decided to go this way. If you guys could hear me, inbox me, comments on below. If you can't, uh, this is gonna be broadcast either way. On YouTube channel, and from there, you know, you hear us in the background. I can't edit that part, that's a bad part of this Zoom. I could try to edit, but yeah, um. Javier, um, let the public know what's up and what's going on for 2020, and let them know whatever you. I, I saw your record, you, you volunteer a lot, so let them know what's going up out there.
Right, um. You know, I retired in two thousand and fourteen from a, from law, law, um. Thirty-two years of law enforcement career, serving the public. Um, and so what I've, what I decided to do is, I decided to take a year vacation. A well-deserved vacation, and I, I travel extensively. But then I came back to Callexico, my home, and I said, okay, what, what to do now? So I started getting involved with things in the community in Callexico, and I got invited back then to the Heffernan Memorial Health Care District to the meetings. I figure, that'd be something, you know, I'm pretty well-versed in law and criminal justice, so I'll try the health, uh, health, uh, healthcare area. So I got involved there, I used to go to the meetings a lot. Then I got a, I got to know the board directors, and I got invited to, uh, to do the, the first ever health fair with the, uh. With the Heffernan Memorial Health Care District, and by, we set up a budget, and we did a pretty successful health fair back in two thousand and seventeen. That was in October two thousand and seventeen, so that, that, you know, I got the bug, I got hit by the bug, and I said, okay, I'm gonna do something with my community. And ever since, uh, I've, uh, you know, I've. You know, I, I concluded that, you know, more than books, uh, classes, videos, and virtual meetings, you know, as vital as they are nowadays. It's been critical and, and my thoughtful observation of others that has helped me mature the most professional life in public servant. Uh, and some of the mentors that I got in Connor along the way. Are just people I admire from a distance, and I learned, I learned, uh, the political arena here, the local politics in Callexico. And, uh, so prior career in public service as a police officer. And I figured I, I volunteer some more. I believe I, the right combination of qualifications make me a successful council member. So now, uh. Fast forward to two thousand and twenty. I, I am a president of the Board for the Collective Wellness Center. I'm also president of the Board of Directors for the Woman Haven. Uh, and by the way, we're gonna have a forty-three years anniversary this year, and we're, we're having a, uh, a, um. An event here in El Central coming up pretty soon in October, the, around the middle of October. I also volunteer, um. At the Imperial Valley Continuum of Care Council, that's the formerly known as the TAC, the Home Task Force. I also got involved with the local here in Callexico, at the California Unified School District. The Measure V Citizens Oversight Committee, I'm also part of that, been there a member for about two years now. And I've also, uh, just recently, it's last week, I, I put in my name in the hat, and I got it, I got appointed for the, um, Imperial County. Area of Agency, you know, we handle the, all the accounts and all the, yes, the, the elderly population here in Pearl County. That's new to me, so it's another, another, uh, another experience I'm gonna learn along the way. So like I said, I'm very active, I, I care what happens in Callexico, I'm from Callexico, I'm educated in Callexico. Even though I was here a police officer back in, in, I started in nineteen, in nineteen eighty and left in nineteen ninety-eight to pursue a further career with the Department of Justice. So I went to the Attorney General's Office back in ninety-eight, and, and I retired in two thousand and fourteen from, and I, from the law enforcement career there with the, the Attorney General's Office. And by the way, um, that, that was a very, very, uh, interesting career towards my end of a, a profession. So that's pretty much what I, what I, what I've been involved with. I network with a lot of organizations, uh, in terms of healthcare, uh, security, management. I also pursue my, my, uh, my, my education. I went back to school, I, I've got my master's in criminal justice, and I just recently finished my doctorate in management and leadership. Well, that's pretty much what I, what makes me a, what makes Javier Moreno in Callexico and the Pearl County Committee.
Being, being in the law enforcement. And with that experience, are you gonna help clean the corruption? That's so, been, been told by, by associates of mine. Cause they saw that you're running for office, and they said, hopefully he does, I mean, you clean up and see what goes on with your own eyes, you know, that's what I've been hearing in Callexico about you. You know, that you, hopefully you clean that once you elect it, you know?
Yeah, um, you know, that's, that's in my DNA, criminal justice on my DNA, I, based on what's happened, uh, recent years. It's a topic that, that a lot of people, when I go on the streets, they, they talk about it, and they wanna know more. But it is, another priority of, of mine is to, if, I think also I can speak for the majority of the citizens, Callexico is dishonesty. Uh, and the political infighting and interest, uh, interference, uh, and poor oversight are among some of the problems affecting our city. Uh, all of these issues have far-reaching repercussions for service delivery and contribute towards creating a culture of corruption in Callexico. Uh, yes, more, yet more unfortunate is what needs to be done to address some misconduct, to at least promote a culture of accountability. No one is talking about that, the lack of accountability beyond corruption, which is a real cancer within a system of governance led by a local leader. I mean, to address these challenges, um, I think I would propose to empower our citizens. By creating a pathway that gives citizens relevant tools to engage and participate in our government. It's important that we get the, the community involved. Finger pointers, that they get good lip service, I can go to books and read books about corruption, but that's just words, but actions, right? Uh, I think we, we, a pathway for that is get the community involved. You know, to identify the, what's going on internally, what's gonna, the priorities that this government has, the problems, and, and find solutions ultimately. Find solutions that, uh, to cut the red tape, uh, to bring, um, together formal and informal processes. Uh, this, this means essentially working with the city, city council, working with the people in Callexico. To change that behavior, that, and then also, an important thing for me, uh, would be monitor progress. Right? Monitor the progress as we move along to, to eradicate corruption. City.
Yeah, cause that's, that's a big topic for me, and, and I got inboxes from your people over there, and, and they're like, hey, what's going on? And come join us for this protest, you know, we know you're out there now, and like, I've been out there for many years, but I just. My DNA and your challenge is just, I, I go back to the National Guard Army, when I heard they, they knocked that down, I was like, oh my gosh, I was raising that little. National Guard Army in Callexico, if you don't understand that, my dad was put there with other politician, which is Jack Tarasas, he was also in there. A few family members and that, that are your constituents in Callexico. We were inboxing like crazy what was going on with the National Guard Army.
Right.
That National Guard Army was used for to put our homeless, cause I'm, you know, I'm very, I would care when it comes to homelessness. Something to put the homeless, cause you've got a big population on the homeless over there as well, I know that, what's going on over there, I, I see it, I hear it. I've been there, I read it, I go, sometimes to Callexico, I'm in and out, but I'm just taking care of business and I'm out, you know? And that's why I'm looking forward to, you being elected, this is why I'm doing these interviews, I tell everybody that, you know what? I'm, I'm giving all the newbies on, and then that incumbents are later on, but you know, there's so much going on that. I'm not being biased with, uh, we talked about you and me prior on doing this, you know, just what's going on. How election takes effect, how COVID has taken this, a big effect in social media now. It was in, it was in for COVID, we wouldn't have, we could be together, you know, hanging out, interviews together. But I can't do that no more, and it's been hard on me as well, but I'm used to like doing it face-to-face. And, and how, another question would be more about downtown, how do you see downtown if you're elected? How, how do you see the improvement of downtown?
Um, you know. My political platform, uh, evolved, involves around, uh, downtown issues. If elected, my top priorities would include the economic development of downtown. Obviously, health is a, a thing here with COVID nineteen, public safety. I believe when you have a community that thrives economically, feels safe and is healthy, the city grows. My goal is to work alongside our citizens and engage them, uh, making sure everybody, everyone is served, including downtown, the business district. Those business owners, uh, if you go down there, it looks like a ghost town. So I have a vision, uh, to have, uh, I know there's, there's, well back there was plans to renovate the whole downtown. Uh, I believe in even, even including, uh, close first street and second street, uh, kind of look tall town, uh, make it attractable, especially at the, at the pedestrian, pedestrian is. Imagine one day coming in, uh, from the pedestrian side and just see the whole downtown revamp. You know, little shops and cafes and, you know, things, you know, more attractable for, for, for tourists and obviously the citizens. So, so my goal is that, um, uh, so, but we need to involve, involve people's voice. So in, in increasing resident involvement and discussing issues particularly downtown. Uh, we need to reach out and find out different ways to gain their insight. Uh, we have no economic development, and our, our next generation of college residents have no opportunities to return to our valley. And attain well-paid professionally failing jobs. San Jose University eliminated the degrees they have, when I went to IBC for three, two years associate, that was out for me. Uh, then I got into law first, but, but, uh, had I, had I, uh, had I gone out of here and got to a, you know, San Jose University, San Diego, UCLA. I probably would have stayed up there, um, because there is nothing for, it's according to the, to Labor Statistician Imperial County. Uh, driving labor forces, government and retail. And government, as you know, it's anything to do with law enforcement, hospitals, schools, uh, prisons, that's government. But, and then retail, it do with, uh, with, uh, you know, businesses. So we need to stimulate economic development and create jobs by attracting, uh, promoting businesses that want to do business in Callexico. So I want to continue, uh, growing a city in a positive direction and continue to protect and strengthen. Uh, the qualities of our city and those who want to live here in Callexico. So, um, yeah, uh, obviously downtown, it's gonna be a challenge, especially as we are still on a lockdown stage with COVID nineteen.
Yeah, I just had a, uh, one person just respond, she had audio phone screening by the, uh. Hey, it's Meryl, and I just thought, uh, and it's gonna be broadcast. Copped up right now, um, yeah, um, on YouTube, and I'll share it on social media. But yeah, um, and I, I'm glad you're doing that, because I'm a small business owner, I was trying to move my business up there before COVID. To let you know, downtown right across from the police department, and I was like, dang, could I, should I, would I? Because, uh, I, I did my research, and I found out that in Callexico, Callexico has a high, um. Credit score rating in the county, I don't know if you know that. Just on credit score as a business owner, you know, people that wanna run, run their credit. Callexico was pointed out, out of the whole county, low, low credit scores on, on people. And I was surprised to see that, and I said it to a friend that does bookkeeping, and she's like, yeah, so she did her research too, she's like, you're right, and I'm like, yeah. It was just weird to see that. People in Callexico, I think, cause it's the frontera, or you're right by the border, or, or people just don't care about paying their bills, or. I don't understand how, still trying to figure that out when I go to Callexico, but people do shop there constantly, but they don't, they have back credit score. And I don't know what you have to say about that one.
Well, you know, that, I, I wasn't aware of that, um, which you just mentioned with the credit, um, doesn't surprise me though, however. But here's the, to address though, some of those challenges, I think we, we need to adequately link financial investments to result outcomes, right? Limiting the ability for in-depth analysis and understanding the, the real, uh, what's goes real, real return of investment. For any, any given line of business or initiative, and the problem is, do we attract businesses? Fine, but what about the retained, the ones that are here? All right, prevent them from closing and leaving. Uh, the solution is, I believe it's a solution, is a performance-based framework to allocate the resources to specific objectives and activities based on appropriate measures. Uh, so ultimately, I think this framework will provide increased visibility into how financial system decisions translate into results. Uh, I think another priority is to continue to desert diversified our economy. Uh, so we can do not experience a cycle of booms and busts that can maintain a more stable economy. Uh, at a local level, the cities, I think that, I believe the city is responsible for economic development, obviously. Uh, but only by, by positioning our framework to complete infrastructures that will incentivize, nurture, and develop, and expand the economy. The infrastructure is very important, uh, you can have got nice downtown, new streets, all clean. But if you don't have to instruct the infrastructure, and then the security, the house, uh, the health aspect. You know, that's not gonna attract, uh, businesses, uh, and probably the ones that are gonna stay here are also gonna exit because they're not providing the proper infrastructure. So I believe as, um, uh, economic diversification, local businesses, entrepreneurs in the market, they pick how diversified we can be. Our government's role in business is to state a need and let the entrepreneurs and businesses in our community find solutions for that particular need. That goes along, uh, with the, uh, along with the, uh, adage, yeah, see the need and feel the need, right? Uh, economic development is extremely important to our city, especially going through the pandemic, this pandemic, and economic downturn, the, the economy has been challenging. Uh, I believe this could be attainable through developing a strong infrastructure that also includes an educated and trained workforce for employees to draw from. The last piece of economic development pie is where I think, uh, government has a role in helping to improve the quality of life. And then to attract qualified workers. Uh, so I think we need to focus more on making our existing businesses strong, but we can focus too much on recruitment and just, it's just a small piece of economic development.
Yeah, and you're right on that, because, uh. I see that, and I, when I go into that town, which I'll be soon again, this week, um, uh, I love. One place I always stop, I, I post on social media that, the hot dog shop. Man, that hot dog shop you guys have down there, that lady knows what she's doing in the hot dog shop. I know she's closed, but you know, people, I was there recently, just, and I bought me a bike recently there in Callexico, at a shop there, and, and the lady just recognized, like. She's like, you're from El Centro, I go, yeah, I came to buy stuff, bike, and I'm out of here. You know, it was fun, yeah, it took COVID, there was still traffic downtown Second Street, which is National Store, the old National Store. And she questioned me, she's like, why brings you from El Centro here? I go, cause that one bike, you, you can't see, cost you four or five hundred bucks, and you're. Giving a good price on it, so I got a good price on this one bike, and I like it, but what I'm trying to say is that. I just never saw so much people still crossing the border like, like no other day, it's like another day. I know, our coworkers, people that work on the US side, these are people that have family on that side, or they're just there to pick up mail, and. And I see that all the time I cross, and I'm like, man, what is going on, you know, and then I go to Tijuana, it's like another day in Tijuana, I was recently in Tijuana. Crossing the border and same thing, I was like, you know, and, and I just see that. Now they're, the, the RAS is taking help to cause, now I'm starting to see that, I'm starting to see that they're wearing their mask. They know what six feet distance mean, and I'm glad we're advocating to that with the RAS up there, you know, and. Very points of the border, cause that's my main thing too, I look at.
Yeah, so that's a big, that's a huge challenge for, for, for our city. You know, I'm at the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh, has no doubt, as a matter of fact, solidify the need of urgency to diversify our economy. An important priority, yeah, for me is to first and foremost, before we fully open for business, right? We need to prioritize the health and wellness of our residents, you know, business owners, especially our workers. Why insurance or proper safety measures are implemented before employees return to work. Uh, in this regard, um, moving forward, it will be important for the city to work with, uh, to help, uh, leverage some federal funds. That may be able to supplement certain city expenses, uh, such as fields, any vacant positions, plant races, and other costs associated with, uh, with, uh, workers, uh. In Callexico, um, yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, cause I mean, uh, you guys get a lot of people over the malls. Or just crossing the border, I see people posting on social media, hey, I'm heading to Micali, wanna go with me? I'm like, really? You know, stuff like that, I mean, I have no business across the border, unless I'm gonna go see the doctor, I'm gonna go see friends of mine. But I told all my friends to hold on to the winter, because we don't know what this COVID is gonna do. You know, I, I know you guys can't cross TUS, but you guys stay over in Micali, and that's the part that I'm looking at personally, cause I have friends that live in Micali. They can't cross, and there, there's reasons why, I told them, but I ain't gonna hit older too, I'm ready, and I'll be there, but. I just think Callexico and Callexico, and yeah, I'm glad you're running for office, like I was talking to former city councils, and they said, you're. You gotta go out there, out there and hustle and hustle, and I'm glad you're running for office, cause I, I see you in work, I see you work when, when it comes to, was it that? The one we did together, um. Yeah, with, um, with the group you're working with, um, the healthcare.
With the Collective Wellness Center?
Yeah, I mean, you, you done worked, and then I see you're well, well with the homeless, which is a big plus, because right now, all the homeless are in Callexico. I don't know, I, I call it because of the border, or just they're all in Callexico, they're not hard, they're harder here in El Centro.
Some of those, yeah, we, I, I help, uh, I help Mari Vett by the way with the Brownback Coalition, and, uh. Uh, I help her feed, uh, but I'm more and more, uh, helping her with other stuff that, that, uh, logistics that she has for, for organization. Uh, so I do, I do help feed, I, for the last year, I've been, I've been going out there, and I do feed on, uh, the last Sunday of every month. Uh, myself and another lady that's, uh, that lives here in Callexico. So yeah, so I'm aware of the, the problem there, and, and also by, for the record, we're talking about people who, uh, don't want, do wanna be homeless, wanna be in the streets, right? Those are people that, unfortunately, we can't really help, because they don't wanna be helped, right? But we still gotta feed them, we gotta be compassionate, but what about the people that are experiencing homelessness? For whatever reason, they got, they left a job, they got fired for COVID nineteen, it's a thing right now, some people, they're coming back to each other, they're not there, because. Uh, so what are we doing with those? So being able to, uh, uh, because I'm a, I'm a member of the executive, uh, board of directors for the Imperial Valley Continuum of Care Council. I have insight on that, and where all the, with all the funds, and, and just, just to mention one program that comes from the governor news and. There's three hundred million dollars this fiscal year allocated for homeless, uh, task forces, uh, throughout the state, and we're one of them in Pearl County. And so Project Room Key, uh, lab, was implemented to the governor's office, and by the way, we have direct contact with them. To our homeless task force, uh, with this office, and so Project Room Key, what it does is, uh, just Imperial County. Was given thirty-seven trailers, Callexico put in for ten of them. And so right now, uh, the Collective Wellness Center is working with the, uh, we're working with the, uh, the, uh, broke, um, Catholics, the Catholic Church. Uh, Catholic Charities, Diocese of San Diego, so we're making, we're proposing a budget right now to get some of those funds, so we can bring those funds to Callexico. Use those trailers, uh, set them up at, uh, potentially at the Catholic churches, they're on, I'm sorry, on seen us. And then, and then, and then look for, uh, for, uh, for homeless people and put them in those trailers, now there's. Uh, we do have a family right now staying up at Best Western that, uh, Blanca Morales, the CEO from Collective Wellness Center. In cooperation with, uh, Spread the Love, Charity with Jessica Salorio, who takes care of the North End, and also Mari Vett Padilla, the Brownback Coalition. But we're housing that family right now at the Best Western, we've been paying for that, uh, feeding that family, and we've been paying for the hotel for the last almost three weeks. So our intention is to get, uh, get that money for Project Room Key, uh, and move the first family in those trip, one of those ten trailers. And so also the wraparound services, you know, because one thing is giving them a shelter, but that's just transitional, until we, eventually we're able to work with the, uh, Callexico. Housing authorities with, uh, Terry Nava, their director there, so we can provide permanent housing for them. And then, cause they're all recipient, they're, some of them are recipient of other services, but because they get lost in the system, and because they're, they're homeless. They're not be well-kept, they're not healthy, and they miss their appointments, so we're, those wraparound services works well, because, um. That's what the money is for, uh, so that's what's one example we got with the homeless task force, with the Project Room Key in Callexico.
As you said, I was talking to one of my colleagues that's a homeless. As you said, I was talking to one of my colleagues at the homeless task, well, our homeless California and Sacramento in Project Room Key due to, I call it, um, how many people live in that, that city or that county, that, that's how, how they get the help. And Sacramento, they're having a problem right now. It's growing and it's going to grow more. I just had a homeless friend of mine, like I told on social media already, I took care of her already. She's well-played, taken care of, thank God to her social worker. Now she's going to be set aside pretty soon, I mean tomorrow. She keep me posted every other day and it was a dilemma with the family. But what I trip out is that she got help, but she's still getting help and it's going to happen worse due to the dilemma. I don't know if you've heard about that, because I, I haven't been involved into the IBCC, even though I, I don't get those emails no more like I used to. I was on the board, I tell everybody I was on the board since 2009 to 2014, 15. And I left due to politics and, and I know what's goes on in there, in the executive board, uh, or just the writer board and I, I hear it behind scenes, close doors and I tell them all. Hopefully this, this housing does work and these grants do work for the community, because I'm for grants. You know that, uh, I'm for housing. I'm glad the city of all central and IBC is doing tiny houses, which I promoted back in 2009 to the board. They just ran around and then I found out a board member in there was running around with my idea. And I'm like, oh, don't worry about it, doesn't scare me, he's going with my idea and, and, you know, we're doers key. And I pointed him out, I called him out, I called him out one day and I was like, you're from San Diego, you don't know what you're talking about. He stays in San Diego and I told him stairs straight out, you know, I just pointed the board member, he's still there, but he go, comes back and forth from San Diego. And I, what I'm trying to say is that, um, Colexico, all over Imperial Valley, I'm glad you're working on that side of the executive board. You guys are making difference because I, I'm about difference, we're all about difference and our community wants to see that. Um, that this is happening, that it's not going to go away, people think it's going to go away, it's not going to go away. It can get worse as this COVID starts or ends, hopefully this COVID ends. But yeah, it's been a big topic for me and to do to me, because like, you know, my story is out there. But you being running for office, what do you want? Tell the voters now.
I'd like to piggyback on that if I, if I may. But I like, I like to pick it back on that, a little thing about that, because one of the things that, um, that we're also, uh, not, not talking about it. If, at, at least, at least not more, more, more than we supposed to, is we're from one, and, and one side, we have the homeless families, right? For, for whatever reason, they're living at parents' house and a hotel, whatever. But we also have the, all the population, the farm workers, the LGBT, the, uh, the students. So as you know, um, there are hundreds of homeless student, college students in Imperial Valley. Uh, these students are striving to improve their life through education and some go through IBC, some go through San Diego State. So for me, uh, the Imperial Valley's, uh, homeless students are facing a great challenges. In addition to finding a safe and secure place to live, uh, they are navigating through a deadly, uh, pandemic. And, 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 and so, um, that's the problem we have with this, with that, with that, with that, with the student population. So approximately 14% of community college students were homeless. This is according to the US Department of Justice in 2017, they did a survey. And 35% of America's homeless population aged under 24 years or age. So here at this point, at this moment, we have those population in Imperial County. So, and what, what, what does that, what does that do to the students? Well, it, it, it has repercussions in the attendance, right? Because they're transient, uh, many phase barriers when it comes to finding reliable transportation, uh, completing homework assignments and finishing a full grade at one school. Others have sleep deprivation that without access to a permanent bed of their own, many homeless students seldom get a restful night's sleep. Uh, many of students struggle to stay focused while in school. So I think we need, uh, at a local level, I think we need to, uh, address that, 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 that problem. And then, uh, we need to also, uh, address the basic needs, uh, with, uh, in, in a holistic nature, empowering students to use their other resource, our resources we have available for them and learn more on how to help themselves. But one thing is they're homeless, but, but they know those, uh, the services available for them. So I want to bridge that gap. I want to be that, that message, carrying that message that's here. Look, you're homeless, it's okay, we're going to help you, these are the resources available for you. And so I want to also focus on security funds through grants to empower students to actively use resources to ensure their, their achievement. Uh, what I would like to do here in Colexico is create a small task force of faculty, staff and students. Uh, they're dedicated to planning and coordinating their effort. Uh, I think we need to confirm their status, find out who is, who is living homeless, who is not living homeless. And then identify that population and go to them and say, look, we're here to help you. We want you to succeed, we want you to be, get your education, we want you to do good at school. But we want you to ensure that they're getting their support from us. So, so that's a step we can take, uh, take, uh, we can take to best care for the students, uh, to, to make sure their basic needs are kept, either in campus or off campus. So housing, housing in Pearl County, as you know, it's, well, actually Colexico, it's, it's lack, it's inadequate. Obviously, that's, that's not going to solve the problem just by helping and supporting and, and the resources, but also, uh, speaking with, uh, with investors and we need more housing. Just this summer, I saw, driving around in Colexico, I saw two apartment complexes building, uh, uh, being constructed and as soon as they got constructed and within a week, there were four. So that, that's a need right there. Uh, I know also, um, there's a talk and, uh, I wonder if I could, city council a couple of weeks ago approved, uh, that conditional use permit for Mr. Ray Robin and his, uh, his company, uh, the broker, uh, to buy the Holly Fiesta Hotel and, and convert that into housing for senior citizens. And I understand there's, there's 50 units on that. So that, that's a property, it's an escrow. We got invited, when I say we, the Collective Wellness Center, uh, as president of the board, got invited to provide those, the healthcare services. Uh, and because they do, we have the, the, the mix, uh, permit, housing on top and in business on the bottom. So Collective Wellness Center will go in there and provide the services for the senior citizens. Uh, and that what we're talking about geriatrics, uh, physical therapy, including a, a recreation room. But we do have the, the Colexico Community Center, but that gets booked real quick in the summer. And as, as the weather clears, it gets, keep getting booked. So having another senior citizen center there at the, at the Holly's, uh, on the west side of town will be a great advantage for people can also do that. So our intention is the Collective Wellness Centers to, to go in and provide the services and to, to help with the, uh, with the housing project here for that specific population. So similar, it's a project similar like that for students. I would, I would, I would propose with San Diego State University, work with, with, uh, with, uh, the dean, Dr. Ponse there. And so we dialogue and how we can, uh, use, use downtown. The, the, the JC Penney's downtown, downtown is vacant. Uh, we can certainly use, uh, something similar to that business model that Ray Robin and Collective Wellness Center at the Holly Fiesta is doing, uh, downtown. We're closing distance of San Diego State, they really don't have to take a bus or a taxi. They could just walk to the campus and go back and make it, we could do apartments on top, right? And downstairs, we can do a community center for them. That's a, that's a perfect idea. Uh, so yeah, so the homeless population, uh, homeless student, uh, uh, population is, it's in great need right now.
It's a great need, because that you talk to that topic, because I, I spoke to a, a group that's helping our, our students. It's out there and from IBC to San Diego State. And she was telling me that, uh, we need help, they need the resource, they need that. And I'm like, yeah, well, that's where we all come in as a whole community. I send my emails to who I got to send to, but yeah, it just, our, our population is growing on all sides. It has no race or religion, it's, it's on all cultures, it's, it's on all, all stands. You know, it's on all, it's on all levels from, from aging to college students to high school students. I, I just can't believe it, how's it growing? But yeah, that's just another topic we've got to talk about, get to know. But yeah, I mean, I just want to let you know that, thank you, um, we're down, I'm down to my 40th hour. And, um, just wanted to, you know, what you want to tell the people in the community, what you're out there for.
You just want to go and wrap it up, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, um, it's, uh, obviously Colexico has its share of challenges, especially, you know, amid the pandemic. So, you know, the coronavirus threatens our health, upends daily life throughout Colexico. We must take, uh, future steps to prepare for an uncertain future. While no one can predict exactly what would, uh, happen in the coming month, uh, we need to come together to strengthen ourselves in the rural care, uh, healthcare system. Uh, because we live in a rural community, there are unique challenges in Colexico. Uh, my, my platform is of financial, uh, address of financial vulnerabilities in Colexico. The elder population and, uh, the marginalized populations and also the economic vulnerabilities that we have. Uh, and then a few, fewer resources in Colexico, uh, that we have. So, uh, going forward, uh, we got a, collectively has a challenge, but we need leaders in Colexico who lead by example. Uh, they go out in community and my, my intention is to go out in communities in Colexico and bring them to city hall and then be their voice for when we proposing measures initiatives, uh, and also network with, uh, with the local legislators, right? Uh, and it need be, yeah, uh, so we can bridge that gap so Colexico can thrive.
That's good. What do you want to tell the viewers where to reach you at? If they want to reach you. The whole of you.
The, the who, Jimmy?
Where you want the community to reach out to you, information, how they, for them to contact you during your, your campaign?
Uh, I am on Facebook and on, on Instagram, on Facebook, um, and, um, just going there, I'm, I'm one also, one, what I plan to do real, real, uh, shortly within this week, I'm going to go out in the community on Facebook Live and I'm going to go a different type, a different locations in our city. But I think it's, uh, it's very, very important that we are aware of like the parks and we need cleaning, the streets need repaving, uh, lighting, uh, just, uh, yes, go out there and, and just talk about issues that we have in Colexico, not paint, you know, point fingers, because, you know, it's, we have bits of a challenge. So go out there and, 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 and tell the, the citizens our water, our streets, our safety, right along with police officers. It's important that we grab that, that confidence back with the citizen of Colexico, the police department, the first responders. Uh, obviously the, uh, the, the, the educational system also, uh, with the school district, the administrators, all the schools in Colexico. In general, just end of business, the, the, uh, the downtown business district and along Imperial Avenue in downtown. Uh, I think we, we cover all those areas and just talk to people, see what are the concerns out there. And so I'm really looking forward to that and, uh, engage the citizens so we can dialogue and what's, we can better Colexico. And also, uh, this November 3rd, uh, you're going to, uh, choose a candidate. Remember, uh, ask questions, uh, make sure that the candidate is prepared, is educated, is knowledgeable. Uh, I've, uh, I've, uh, got a lot of experience doing community, community volunteer. I know what it is to go out there, I'm always, uh, getting involved in a lot of issues. So, uh, yeah, if you guys want to, uh, call me anytime, my phone number, cell phone number is 619-261-1609. And you can follow me on Facebook and Instagram as well. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll see you soon, talk to you soon.
Thank you. Bye.